This conference will now be recorded.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, Hasslet. I'd like to welcome you all to the City Council meeting. I call to order the Hasslet City Council meeting, April 4th, 2022, at 7:01 PM. There is a quorum present in the chambers. We have Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, Councilmember Nahera, Councilmember Ricketts. Online, we have Councilmember Rob. Item two, the invocation and pledge of allegiance. You bow your heads with me. Father God, we thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. I pray for Ukraine and the evil that just come down on them. Evil has a face and it has a name. Vladimir Putin. I pray that your strong arms sweep across President Putin and bring this to an end. And bring to mind to us the dear cost of freedom and democracy. We thank you so much for your many blessings that we enjoy. I ask that you bless Hasslet, all its inhabitants, the state of Texas, and the United States of America. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. You stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, citizen participation and comments. Is there anyone here invited to comment anything on this agenda? Or non-agenda items to make comment to the council? Is there anyone in the chambers? I see no one in the chambers that would like to make comment. Is there anyone online? Steven, okay, no one online. Well, we'll go to item number four. Yes.
Due to the inclement weather tonight, I'd like to move to have this meeting end no later than eight o'clock.
A privileged motion's been made to adjourn this meeting no later than eight o'clock this evening. Is there a second?
I second.
There is a second. I have a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll adjourn no later than 8:00 PM. Thank you, and good idea. Item four, community, items of community interest. Saturday, April the 9th, at 4:00 PM, we have their annual Easter egg hunt at Hasslet Community Park. Everyone come, it's always a great time. Lots of children running around and in the race for Easter eggs. The four Bs, all city offices will be closed Friday, April 15th, 2022, for Good Friday. Hasslet Public Library will be closed Friday and Saturday, April 15th through 16th, 2022 as well. Also is our volunteer appreciation dinner is Saturday, April 30th, at 6:00 PM. At Heritage Baptist Church. I encourage you all to bring, to come and bring your significant others. It'd be a great time. We get to thank all our volunteers who make all of this possible. And count yourselves in that group. Amen. All right then. Four D. The general election, May 7th, 2022's general election. Early voting dates and times are as follows. And the place is Legacy Learning Center, 501 Schoolhouse Road. Is Monday, April 25th, Friday through Friday, April 29th. Those hours are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, April 30th is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Sunday, May 1st, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And Monday, May 2nd, Tuesday, May 3rd, through Tuesday, May 3rd, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Election days, May 7th, 2022, 7:00 AM, 7 to 7:00 PM, at Legacy Learning Center, which is 501 Schoolhouse Road. Item five, updates on activities and items, projects and event recaps. Mr. Rogers.
Well, the community park projects are slated to go to the park board's meeting on April 13th, 7:00 PM. And then after that, I'm hoping we will come back here with a recommendation shortly thereafter to this board. And then our Public Works equipment purchases. This should be here probably this week. This is a large format mower for the park, but it also comes with an edging machine to edge the tap trail and the walking trail in the park, as well as a broom to sweep out underneath the bridge where we get through the big storms. We always end up with dirt, mud, rocks, a little bit of everything. So it'll be pretty much community park tap trail machine almost all the time. That's where you'll probably see it pretty much every day.
Very nice. It, I did volunteer to mow the park using the new equipment. I need to break it in, make sure it works.
As long as you don't break it, that's fine. Breaking it in is one thing, breaking it would be a bad thing.
Well, very good, that's excellent. Let's go to item six, the consent agenda. Six A is approval of the March 21st, 2022 regular city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion is made to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. We have a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. I understand, but I'll recognize her after this vote. Motion passes four zero with Councilmember Clark being absent at this time. I will recognize Councilmember Clark. She is now online, both audio. Would you please say hello to us? Make sure your microphone works.
Yes, this is Councilmember Clark. Can you hear me? Councilmember Clark, can you hear me?
Yes, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, make note that at 7:09 PM, that Councilmember Clark did join us in the council meeting. Item seven, public hearings ordinances, resolutions, and action items. Seven A, discuss, consider, and act on an interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for rehabilitation, repair, and resurface or partial resurface portions of White Road, White Lane more specifically. So, Mr. Rogers.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is something, we do this each year with Tarrant County Precinct 3. We try to work up a program, a project that fits within the scope of work they like to do. This year's project is White Lane. It is in two pieces so that they can kind of keep as much of the road open as possible during the construction. It will be, the first part is up on the hill from basically coming up from Bain Road down to where it drops off the hill. And we have the second phase, which is basically Bain Road, all the way down to Bonds Ranch Road. They will come in, they will mill up the road, and they will mix the cement lime series into it. We'll take some testing on that, see what that comes back. They will then shave off the four inches off of there to put down the four inches of asphalt pot mix that they'll lay. And luckily with the county, they will pretty much every day that when they finish the end of the day for them, they will always keep the road open. During the day, there will be some minor shutdowns for short periods, but they always work really hard to keep the road open. So we hope to not have too much, you know, disturbance to anybody there. There'll be a lot of flying dust and dirt, yes, but hopefully nothing more than that. Now, any questions, anything anybody else wants to know about the project? We're happy to.
I got a question on clause number six and number 10, time period for completion. It just says that the county is under no duty to commence construction at any particular time. Is there a time that we have now?
Right now, they're scheduled, looking like they would be here May 2nd, and they would be in and out within 30 days.
Oh, so it's a short period of time, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, when they come, they don't, they try to, because they've got so many projects lined up. They don't have a lot of time to wait. So once they get somewhere, they put everything into that project and move on.
Okay, and that just goes into number 10, the termination, which says if it's not complete by December 31st, then it's terminated.
Yeah.
So obviously they're going to be done before.
This is when they do these ILAs, they're technically for the entire year. Because there is, it hasn't happened often, but towards the end of a year for them, which they run slightly different than ours, since we have ours October 1st, you know, September. They, these ILAs run calendar year, basically. They can run always from January to December 31st. So they always put it in there, and there's always a possibility at the end of the year, if they have some time available, if somebody's got another project, they'll come back in and you don't have to change the whole entire ILA. All you have to do is change one part of it, add in another project, and they can come out and work on it at the end of the year. But they pretty much do these all the time, where they're kind of open-ended from that standpoint. Because if they got time, they want to keep working. That's just their thing.
Councilmember Rob, I have a question.
Councilmember Rob, I have a question.
Sure.
So, I believe you said that it ended at the top, the rest of the road and.
Yeah, they, we had that project with the same group, Precinct 3, that they did from 156 up to, and just at the bottom of that large hill there on White Lane, that's where we only had enough money to go to that point. So they're going to basically pick up from that exact point and move up over the top of the hill all the way down to Bain Road.
Okay, great, that's good. Okay, great, that's good.
Yeah, it'll finally be completely finished with pretty much fairly new pavement from one end to the other.
Council, any other questions for Mr. Rogers? And what is the cost of that project to the city, Mr. Rogers? Is that it, the 561,000?
Yeah, that's it, 561,000. That includes all the contingency and all for this project.
You know, I've got to thank Tarrant County and Precinct 3 so much. You know, when they come in, they, they supply, we don't have to pay for equipment nor the labor. And we only pay, we pay for the materials, the road materials, and 50% of the fuel cost. It is such a great deal.
It is. This, that is one of the best deals I have ever seen, to get a lot of work for not a lot of money.
I would like for our finance director, Marcy Lamb, to address where we're taking that money from.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And we're, we're in an echo, we're in an echo. We're going to take that from, we're going to take that from the transportation sales, transportation sales. You have enough funds, have enough to accomplish that project, accomplish that project.
So I find it has grown quicker than we've anticipated, and very good. Any, any questions for Mr. Rogers or Marcy Lamb?
I got one quick question. On the fuel cost, did you anticipate the fuel being much higher now than whenever the deal?
The county, yes, they did. They actually figured this at as much as $5. So they're expecting this is going to, generally, most of their projects do come in under, they usually bid everything kind of on the high side when they calculate. But yeah, they had figured at $5 a gallon diesel. So they figured we're going to pay. And under their contract, I think they are currently paying on three, 380 some odd, I believe. So we should be in really good shape.
One final question, and I think this is, this goes back to our budget last year. If I remember correctly, we had this, both of these projects in the budget, just in case this didn't come through.
Yes, yes, these were already in the project along with more than this. But I mean, we get down to what we could finally afford. This was the ones that we could budget in this year, and then we'll look again at the next ones for next year.
Okay.
And more specifically in the budget, we had this as a project that we would go out on a CO for a debt type project. So Marcy reviewing the budget and the transportation sales tax was, just saw that we were able to pay cash out of our budget for this instead of taking it to a debt item. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion approving this ILA.
Mayor Holsey.
Yes.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for the rehabilitation, repair, and resurface, or partial resurface portions of White Road.
Could I get you to amend that to White Lane? It's White Lane, it's not White Road. Okay, very good. Motion is made to approve the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County for rehabilitation, repair, and resurface or partial resurface portions of White Lane. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. I have a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts. Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Council. Motion passes five zero. Seven Bs, presentation and discussion of known capital project needs. What's our, go to, you know, page one, there we go. This is from our Capital Improvement Project Advisory Committee. And these are projects, these are all infrastructure projects. They are all water, predominantly water, and sewers. So that's all you see on here is water and sewer projects. And these are necessary because of all our new subdivisions. Yes, the subdivisions put in the piping and things of that nature, the right size for their subdivisions. But we have, and David, if I describe this incorrectly, you please let me know. But we got to connect it all up, and we got to beef up our system to carry this load from one point to another and connect them all and transfer the water or transfer this sanitary sewer from one point to the other throughout the city. And these are those projects. And it might have been in November, I was, it, I had cause to go back and look for this report and found this. And what we have here is almost $28 million worth of projects that need to be in the ground by 2028. Let's go to the next page, page two. Okay, this is our budget. This is from our, these are capital projects, our capital requests. You see in the top left is from our budget fiscal year 2021 to 2022. Up at the very top, I made a couple of notes, they're in yellow there. And the first five items all have to do with the, what we call the south pump station. Actually, I find that amusing because we only have one pump station. But do we got two?
Yes, we have the one at Harmon Road Elevated, I think, also.
Oh, okay, all right.
This is, this one here will be, once everything, the system is matured, I guess you'd call it, this will be the number one station. It will do probably 60, 70% of the work for the city.
Anyway, is that the pump station, you know, what we knew at the time of making the budget, it was estimated at maybe a little less than half of what the actual cost would be. Currently, this pump station is estimated at $3.2 million. We have approximately $1.2 million budgeted. And so we have a, about a $2 million funding deficit, which would probably go to CO or a GO. Now, CO is as being a certificate of obligation. That is a debt instrument that's executed by the council. A GO is a general obligation bond, a debt instrument as well. And it is a, that is voted on by the citizenry. So that's the differences of the two. If we could go down to, so I'm making note of that, there is, there's a $2 million deficit. Here on, this is street department, I made some notes here. We had estimated a little over a million dollars to rebuild White Lane. And having the fortune of the interlocal agreement, we were able to save a large amount of money. And so these were slated to be in a debt issuance as well. And, but we have the funds in our transportation tax to pay for that project as you just approved a little bit ago. So that will be taken out of any debt issuance. So from this, taking account, removing these items here, and what I've done is tally up the, all this in this third column from the left, all of those are proposed debt issuance. So the, the total on this sheet from our budget right now is $3.5 million. If we could go back to page one. There we are, at the very bottom of the sheet. Well, there's a subtotal of 27.945, or 27,945,000. Adding that 3.5, that gives us a number of future known capital projects right now between our budget and this capital improvement report that's stated to need to be in the ground by no later than 2028, some much sooner, some this year. As you can see the dates on the far right. So it gives us $31.5 million worth of projects that we need to plan for and to how we're going to structure that debt and accomplish these requirements for the infrastructure upgrade that's needed. If we could go to what we've done, and I've got a little action plan here, there's no handout to it. It's on the screen right here. And it's the capital projects, funding and action plan going forward. I've mentioned several times before in other meetings that staff and I are working on an eight-year budget to take us out to 2030. That was born out of finding, of course, reading these infrastructure projects, how we're going to address this, and we're making good headway on that, that budget. It's rather, it's very intel, but this is just a high, high-level overview of what's going into the budget. This budget will account for new subdivisions build out, which we expect the build out, full build out of all subdivisions that have been approved to come to end in the second quarter of 2027. We will reach our peak in the build out in the second quarter of 2023. That's what's forecasted. Anyway, we'll account for the transient revenues during the build out, such as construction-related sales tax and our impact fees. We'll count for the annual ad valorem gains, the increased water sewer revenues. We're also going to, at the same time as these build outs occur, demand on the city services and personnel also increase. So we'll be accounting for departmental growth expenditures, the Public Works, the Parks Department, Fire Department, Building Services, and the Administration. Also, what I haven't, this is, you know, this, this list will be refined, but also in there will be policing and other services that are incidental to growth as it comes. We'll revise the water and sewer master plan. Now, here's a good bit of good news. We, all of us have spent a lot of time analyzing this, and engineering's one that has been reviewing this as well. And what was found is that the, the prior, the engineering documents used to construct, that the Capital Improvement Committee used to recommend this to the council, the engineering performed on that was using flow rates three times what any municipality uses. They're using a flow rate of 6,000 GPM. And in lieu of the 2,000 GPM flow rate per a client, like an industrial warehouse or something like that, and that more relates to the fire demand. But nonetheless, is that all of that translates into pipe size, both water and sewer. Because sewer is going to be determined by what the known input is, the sewer's the output. Water is the input. Nonetheless, so that's being reviewed. Also, along with that, was that helped drive up the amount of water that thought might be needed was the use of future land use plans. The future land use plans differ greatly from what our current zoning is. Give you an example where we might, what, we got a, you know, large area of industrial, and the future land use might come in and say, well, it's multi, mostly used, you know, residential, such as, I know that, I think maybe about 1,000-unit apartment complex was used. And that is a very high demand in water in lieu of having an industrial warehouse site out there. What we need to realize, future land use and zoning, unless you're willing to rezone all of that to, such as mixed, the, whether it's mixed use or a high-density residential or something like that, then it never will happen. The, now, when you do do something like that, if you were to take industrial and rezone it to, say, some mixed use, there will be a lawsuit, and they will win because that is viewed as a taking. You're taking the value of higher-priced property to a lower-priced property, and that owner, that is a very successful suit with owner. So that's, that is, I'll say, a. So that's, uh, that is, I'll say, a policy in using, um, a future land use plan to size our systems with that we have to, unless a, a council, much less this one, any council is, is, uh, prepared to go through the lawsuits of rezoning to make your zoning match your future land use plan, you're driving up some artificial, uh, line sizing and system demands throughout the city that are never, will, will never be needed. So we're looking, uh, we're looking at, uh, at that as well. Also, there, there are aspects where the future land use will come into play, but also balancing that with what our zoning is. Our, here, our current zoning is, and taking that into account, which all previous calculations never did that. The good news is there's very mu- there's a high potential to drive this down to maybe sixty percent of this, uh, three, thirty-one and a half million dollars, maybe sixty percent of that. Still a lot of money that we have, have to account for, but we want to get the right size. And then we could go, uh, from there. The, uh, from there, it's item three here, we'd incorporate the revenues and expenditures into the budget as a function of time and build out. We would determine, uh, the net revenue for allocation to capital projects. And all along the way, we'll be keeping you updated, council. Just where we are won't be the final answer. Final answer will come from, for your, or, or I'll say strategies. It won't be answers. There'll be different strategies that this, the council's going to have to make choices to. We'll provide all this information to, uh, our financial advisors. And let them propose different strategies for the issuance of debt to address the, the funding of these capital projects. Now, as we go, uh, in the next council meeting, I will be, uh, adding some more projects in here that aren't accounted for by the capital improvement committee. It's not there. Some of those projects you will find in the strategic plan. Uh, some of them, um, uh, such as the construction of, um, Blue Mound Road East. That right now is estimated to be about six million dollars. That's nowhere. Uh, the, uh, public works facility. They're going to grow. They're growing now. And, uh, we have got to have sufficient, uh, facilities for public work. Uh, another item would be the fire department. We're, uh, looking at in the future, very near future, hiring, uh, six more firemen full-time to get through interlocal agreement with Fort Worth. So we get shared response throughout the city, and we also reciprocate to Fort Worth and respond to their needs as well. Uh, but we have to have, um, you know, at least this estimated now, one more bay, another piece of equipment, and, and rooming for, uh, six additional firefighters. So, w- we got a lot of growth. We're growing up. And, uh, since we buy one pair of shoes, we've outgrown them and got to go shopping again. But we need a plan. We can't go year to year. And that's why we are doing this, uh, budget out to twenty thirty, addressed by year. The granularity of it is, uh, by quarter. We're doing as much detail to this so we can be as accurate as possible so we have the big fit and a complete fit. Uh, and that's, this is just purely a presentation. There's no answers right now. Just wanted to give you an idea of where we're headed to, uh, to address this, to bring it to the council eventually and, um, in a timely way so that, uh, this next budget cycle is up, is coming up, and we'll be able to take all of this thing into consideration. Uh, that's the, uh, really kind of capped my presentation on this item. If you've got any questions relative to this, I'm happy to answer what I know. I haven't got all the answers right now.
One question I had was, um, who serves on the Capital Improvement Project Advisory Committee? Like you said, that's who came up with this idea. Who actually is on it?
Who was on it? He was essentially Miami.
So, Mr. Chambers?
Same.
Okay. Oh, and Mr. Rogers?
We're specifically they don't want. I, that's capital group, uh, safety. These are
Excuse me, Mayor. Uh, you're breaking up, um, you're breaking up. Wait, I don't think any of us can hear you online.
I'm sorry. I, I had my mic off. Uh, to go back, uh, the P and Z essentially makes up the capital, uh, uh, improvement committee. P and Z does. And, um, the, where this report came out of was from the May twenty fifth, uh, twenty twenty one advisory committee. Now, I went back four years in different reports. Every quarter, they, or not every quarter, biannually, they'll issue a report. One, uh, typically, one is they'll go through, do a detailed study, and really, it's, it's engineering that leads them through this. And that's where it comes from. And, uh, they'll issue a no, new report every year, annually on this. Biannually, they come and it's like doing a currency check, see if anything's changed, any priorities have changed. And generally, they don't during the mid-year. Uh, but they'll issue a much smaller report than this and just to confirmation to the council, we're on track, or, you know, whatever adjustment not, might need to be made, should it be made. Uh, in twenty eighteen is when I saw a big jump. Up to that point, all the capital projects, and it, and it's probably in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when these subdivisions really started on strong. I mean, it hit Haslett all at once. Formidable task to deal with all of that. Uh, the, so from that report, which said virtually every item that was on that Capital Improvement Committee list that we were just looking at here, it was different, and everything on there was showing completed. And then all of a sudden, these projects start building up until what we have now is from, uh, this time last year is, oh my God. We've got, uh, twenty seven million dollars worth of infrastructure to put in the ground. The, uh, so there'd been, you know, between, uh, so this is the first budget cycle that there'd been opportunity and all of us being movies. And some of you more tenured folks, uh, you know, it's just that capital, I know historically, is that Capital Improvement Committee report, it kind of sits in the background. It doesn't jump up and bite us. And less there's someone out there, and the most prominent person to do that would be the engineering, city engineer, wave a red flag, what about this? What about this? So right now, I wanted to bring it to your attention, and we will be addressing this. We have to have a plan. There's no way around it. Uh, long road to China. To answer your question, that was the P and Z members that are on the, on the board. Any other questions?
Just a question to clarify, just to make sure I, I understand this correctly. So right now, as we stand with the projects listed here, it's twenty seven, almost twenty-eight million dollars, correct?
Yes, and when you add in, uh, uh, this sheet right here.
With the under budget, so under budget.
It's three point five.
Three point five.
Okay. To that list.
So thirty-one, about thirty-one and a half million dollars.
Correct.
Total. But of that, you said maybe it will only be sixty percent?
We're hoping, because engineering's going back through this with a fine-tooth comb. And they've been working on this for two months now, maybe more. And, uh, we're real close, as I've been told, maybe sometime this week, we will be reviewing their, you know, work. It's, I'll say, plan area is not ready to show the council or anybody yet. It's in a rough stage. But they can give us, uh, some, um, glimmer of hope.
That's a substantial amount. I mean, it's, uh, it was, it comes down to like eighteen and a half million, so from thirty-two to eighteen and a half is a potential savings if, if everything goes like they think it will, based on not having to have such big sewer lines and water lines.
Oh, yeah, it's substantial. It's a, it could be a substantial saving here. But this is what we know today.
And my question is, will they come back and they'll give us the, we'll take this out of a quarter street maintenance tax. We'll take this out of, um, fund through rate increase. They'll give us a solution to cut it down and see how we can save that money?
Engineering won't. Our financial advisors, you know, they'll tell us what it costs and then, you know, uh, uh, administration here takes over from there, you know. Uh, Marcy Lamb sharpens her pencil and puts her reading glasses on to go find some money for us. And, uh, but certainly, that amount of money and in the short duration, this stuff has to be in place for the city's systems to operate. We're gonna have to go to debt. And we got to have a plan. We got to have choices. We got to know, we got to go into this where our eyes wide open.
Knowing what's happening.
So I've, I've only been on council for four years, but I know the last time we did this type of general, um, look ahead, they call it, yeah, planned look ahead, there was a workshop and we did it at the council. Is that something we, we plan on doing again, or is it going to be just presented and we kind of break it down and give feedback from that?
Uh, we'll have a, a workshop on it. Uh, I wanted to get all the information ready for you. You know, right now, it's just, we have the knowns, a big-ticket item right now. We're going through to verify the sizes, which translates into costs and to get that correct. Uh, so we're, we're, we're trying to cross all the Ts, not all the Is, do all the front-end due diligence works, then bring it to the council, then we'll start our workshops. Here's what's happening. Uh, engineering can give us maybe possible strategies, uh, in conjunction with our public works director. Uh, what systems have to go in first and where, when? You know, that's something we can use. We can use when this has got to go in. And in conjunction with our financial advisors giving us a plan, well, here's how you can structure this. It's not like, uh, you got to go borrow thirty-one and a half million dollars right now. Uh, I don't expect an answer like that. Uh, there's, uh, they can stage these things very deliberately to make it more palatable.
That was sort of going to be my question. It looks like there's a lot of projects involved here in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as you saw. Um, and again, maybe it's so much so that we're, we're getting together ahead of time before our budget session to address the short-term needs and do workshops versus actually the long-term.
Correct. And I didn't want to bring this to, uh, council. It, uh, uh, that's a big surprise. Oh, we got to work this in our budget and y'all not have anything, any foreknowledge of it, but I wanted to get, it's taken this time for us to get to a point and get the different staff members and our consultants engaged to, uh, come up with a plan. Here's how we're going to address the, here's what's happening today. I say, you know, this how we're going to do it. All these items, these items are in play right now, much of them, uh, to bring you further information.
This is Councilmember Rob. I just like, Rob, I just like, like to point out that, uh, in, we're not, that, uh, in the, uh, letter from the, uh, letter from the capital group. They also summarize, uh, summarize the sewer and water impact fees from, uh, new correction, uh, new, uh, construction that has occurred in the city. And, uh, and usually recommend that those funds go to finance the items on, uh, lists such as this. So there's also that. It's, uh, helps to pay as you go.
Understood. You know, and part of our, uh, I heard about every other word. I'm sorry. But, um, you know, one of the things in our, in our, uh, exercises, multi-year budget that we're doing, part of it is what we, we build this, all these growth items with the departments and our operating expenditures, you know, as we grow. And we'll, uh, accounting for all the new revenues, we'll subtract out those, um, operating expenses and department growth items and see what capital annually that we would have to apply towards this. So we're, we're looking at the, uh, the net revenue, uh, as well as, and that would be fed to the financial advisors. It would be great that we could, uh, fund all this without debt, but, but I don't think that's going to happen. I'd, I'm, I'd love to be surprised. Any other questions? There'll be more. Uh, I, I intend to, every council meeting is touch on this item as we learn more in, uh, to bring you more. It'll just be a piece at a time as we gather it all, okay? All right, there's, if there's no more, uh, questions on that, then, uh, automate the executive session. We have no need for executive session. Uh, that, uh, makes item nine mute. Uh, consider and take any action resulting from executive session. There's no need for that. Future agenda items. Anybody have any, uh, future agenda?
I wanted to bring up that, um, Councilmember Ricketts and myself both requested an engineer report um, concerning the utility stubouts for La, LaPrell, and we, we hadn't received that yet.
This is an engineer report?
Is that correct?
For what?
For the utilities stubouts for LaPrell. We requested, I think, two meetings ago.
There, there was two actions, I think, when they came and presented, um, Mayor Holsey, um, when Mr. Burton and Mr. Hazelwood came and presented. One of them was the aspect of, uh, the agreement. The second one was the engineering from the LaPrell agreement.
What aspect of engineering?
It just said, the engine, the water sewer engineers report on the ninety-seven acre tract for the LaPrell trust. That's what we asked about.
Okay, engineer report on LaPrell. All right, uh, Shannon, would you please make note of that and let's put it on the agenda? But it is item number one for right now. It'll have a different place once we get all our items in. I don't want to miss this. Thank you.
This is Councilmember Clark.
That'll be, be good. We'll, uh, we'll tell you where we are in the progress and what the project cost to Haslett's going to be. Anything else?
This is Councilmember Clark. Um, I was wondering if we could have an item on the next agenda for, um, a plan for what, whatever the city administrator position is?
No, I haven't got one. I haven't got a plan right now. It's going to wait till the new council gets seated.
Okay, so the, right now, the interim- Okay, so the, right now the interim is just, we have a deputy administrator. Is that correct?
And, and it's, it's not formally because the, uh, council hasn't, uh, approved the new position. But I treat him as such, and that's Mr. Chambers. I, uh, I affectionately refer to Mr. Chambers as my deputy administrator. And he's doing a fine job right now. We are not, uh, the city of Hasslet is not suffering from the lack of that, um, having a hired person in that position. Any other future agenda items? If not, we go to item 11, adjourn. Could I have a motion?
Mayor Holsy, I'll move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second.
There is a second. A roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Council member Nahera?
Aye.
Council member Ricketts?
Aye.
Council member Rob?
Aye.
Council member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. This meeting is adjourned at 7:52 PM, April the 4th, 2022. Thank you all.
Hey, Mayor Holsy.